The council meeting is called to order. If we could all rise if you're able and pay attention to Councilman Padilla for the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce our guest pastor this evening. Thank you. Pastor Morris James from the El Shaddai congregation. Pastor, would you step to the podium, please?
I am just honored to be here in behalf of my pastor, Tom Watson. They are mourning the loss of their elder son, Earl Watson Jr. That's why he could not be here tonight, so I'm here in his stead. So let's just bow our heads as we pray for them. Father God, we just come to you tonight, Lord. Just say thank you, Father. God, we thank you for your wisdom, for your knowledge, your understanding, God. Father, we pray right now for Tom and Doria and the loss of their son. God, we pray for their strength, Lord, in the name of Jesus. Father, we pray for this council right now, God, that there be cohesion, Father, that there be synergy, Father, that they receive good results, Father, that they listen to you and hear your wisdom and your guidance. Father, be with them and lead them and guide them in their decision-making. Lord, you said in your word that the heart of the king is in the hands of the Lord and the powers that be are ordained of God. So, Father, be with them. Let them use good sound judgment. Bless, Father, this city. Bless their leadership. Bless this council. These things we ask, in Jesus' name. Thank God. Amen. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no mayoral proclamations tonight, so we proceed to presentations. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I have Kelly Ryan, our levy engineer, here to present an update on our levy project.
All right, good evening. And as Manager Trout said, my name's Kelly Ryan, levy engineer, and my presentation provides an update on the Kansas River Levy Rehabilitation System. The levy system are managed by the utilities department. It's part of the stormwater utilities. Levy assets are made up of earthen levees, concrete flood walls, and pump stations and other important features. The protected area is shown on this slide in purple. It contains 11,000 acres. And within that 11,000 acres, there's over 6,500 residences, 800 businesses and public facilities, such as our water treatment plant and both wastewater treatment plants, churches, firehouses, et cetera. There's over $2.7 billion in property value within the protected area. The Topeka Flood Control System has about 100-year history. The first elements of the system that were constructed by the Corps of Engineers are the flood walls in the late 1930s. As a result of the '51 flood, the Corps and the city combined again on an effort to install the remaining levees and flood protection system in the period between 1958 and 1974. Following Hurricane Katrina, Corps completed a study in 2005 to 2009. Purpose of the study was to ensure the reliability of the existing system, which had been about 80 years old at that time. The study found several areas with underseepage issues, and then there was a stability issue with the South Topeka Flood Wall. So to address those concerns, the Corps and the city entered into another project partnership agreement for a $30 million project. That project cost is split 65 federal to 35% local. Construction started in 2015, and it's going to last until 2021. So underseepage was the biggest concern. It had some issues on four of the five levy units around the city. So levees are constructed on natural soil. They aren't taken down. The foundation's not taken down, Father. It's on natural soil. And in Topeka, that natural soil is layered upon foundation sands, and then that's layered on top of the bedrock. When the river gets into flood stage, it starts to push a lot of pressure against the levees, and it forces the groundwater up underneath the levy and causes it to come up onto the land side. So a way to address that is by installation of underseepage berms. One of those underseepage berms was in the first Corps contract. It was installed at the Oakland Levy at the wastewater treatment plant. This is a view of the work area with the levy that you can see on the left and the work area there, cross-hatched. This is a view of the berm that's under construction. This Corps contract cost, the construction amount was $900,000. It was started in 2015 and finished in February of 2017. Another option to resolve underseepage is installation of a line of relief wells. And this is more expensive than berms, so we prefer to put in the berms. But areas where you don't have the real estate available, you'd have to put in a line of these relief wells. And that was done in North Topeka. There was a line of 30 relief wells installed between the levy and the railroad tracks and the cargo facility that you see here. This is just west of Topeka Boulevard. So all these relief wells, the 30 of them, are connected together with the collection pipes. You go to sumps where a temporary pump can be brought in and pump the water from the sump out and over the river, over the levy to the river. So this is a view of the relief wells under construction. Construction of this project started in 2016. And I'm happy to report the final inspection went real well. It was held last week. It was a $3.9 million contract with Arrowhead Construction out of Lenexa. And last, regarding the stability issue with the South Topeka Flood Wall, to explain what's happening there, when the river's in flood stage, that floodwater goes up on the wall and causes that tremendous stress. And when it exerts a lot of pressure on the wall, the Corps studies found that the existing wall sections have a chance to settle or tilt relative to each other, which can further cause them just to fall over. Now, these particular flood walls have been around for over 80 years, and they're in good shape, but when they get loaded up to the top, then we have some issues. So to address the stability issue, that buttresses can be installed, like you see in the red there. And they're founded on these deep caisson foundations that extend about 35 feet in the ground. This is the location where the South Topeka Flood Wall project's going to take place. It's about 2,000 linear feet between Kansas Avenue and River Road. Corps contractor is going to install 215 of those concrete buttresses. They'll be about nine feet apart. And this is going to take place behind Hills Pet Nutrition. Real tight work area. Hills, so far, has been a very good partner. They have, if I, if you can see it, I'm circling this building here on the left, and they worked together with the city to have that demolished, to save us money on the project. This is a view of a similar project that was just completed in Fairfax, Kansas, Fairfax area, along Missouri River. This is what it's going to look like when our flood wall is done with these buttresses, about nine feet apart. Where we're at with this project, the bids for construction was just received last week, and the low bid amount was $11.8 million. The contractors expect it to start on the 1st of March, and it's going to work through the fall of 2020. It's this, the low bidder is the same contractor that won the bid. We just finished the job with the relief wells on the north side. So familiar with Topeka, and we had a really good, real good luck with him. So, all told, the project's going to, right now, it's tracking to come in under budget, probably two to three million bucks. So that means cost shared. We're going to have some money come back to the city on the project, so. So that's what I have to update you on. I'm open for any questions that you guys might have.
Any questions or comments from the body? Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a quick comment. I have been on the council since 2009 when this first was, the city first started to budget for it and explain what was needed. This is the best set of pictures and explanations I've seen the whole time, so thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Yes, that was an easy one.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we proceed with the roll call.
Mayor DeLayslan?
Here.
Councilmember Pillar?
Here.
Clear?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Jensen?
Present.
Mays?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
And Lesser?
Here.
We now move forward to the consent agenda. If the clerk would read.
A is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller approving a special event known as the 2018 Modern Day Irish Fest. B is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Sandra Clear approving a special event known as the Topeka Civic Theater's Art of Murder to be held on June 8, 2018. C are minutes of the regular meeting of January 8, 2018, and there's a list of cereal and beverage applications before you staff is recommending appropriate.
What is the pleasure of the council? Councilwoman Jensen?
Move to approve.
Councilman Emerson, seconds? We proceed to the voting.
We have 10 yes. Motion passed.
Now we proceed to the action items. The next item is the election of a deputy mayor. If the clerk would read.
A is election of deputy mayor to serve a one-year term pursuant to Topeka Municipal Code, Section A 2, 2068.
So for everybody that's here and all the individuals that are new to the council, the way that this works is that anybody is able to nominate an individual to become the deputy mayor. Somebody can also self-nominate if they were to choose to do so. The vote requires six individuals to vote for the same individual so that it passes. In front of you, you have ballots in different colors. Thank you to the city clerk for color coordinating these for us. You, once somebody has been nominated, you're able to go ahead and do the vote. You close your ballot and you pass it on. The ballot will go over to the city clerk. They will go ahead and give us the numbers. Once we have somebody that sees this, if we do not have consensus on one individual, we will repeat the process again. Do we have any questions? No? Okay. So are there any nominations that are entertained? Deputy Mayor Cohen?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to nominate Councilman Jensen. And I will accept your nomination.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we proceed to voting. Oh, I have to ask three times? Thank you. So I'll ask again, are there any other nominations? Finally, are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we proceed to the voting. Thank you.
We have Jensen. We have 10 for Jensen.
10 for Jensen means that Councilman Jensen now becomes Deputy Mayor Jensen. Congratulations.
Thank you all for the privilege of serving. I look forward to this opportunity.
Before we proceed, I would like to take the liberty of expressing my appreciation to Deputy Mayor Cohen, who did exemplary work supporting Mayor Walgast during his tenure and even this week, standing up and filling in. Thank you so much for your great service. Item B, election of the JDO board members. If the clerk would read.
B is election of two city council-voting representatives to serve a one-year term on the Joint Economic Development Organization Board.
For this board specifically, there are two individuals that can be nominated. This board, the JDO board, serves in conjunction to the county commission to do all the business pertaining to half and sales tax that we receive to do economic development. So it's a very engaged board. Every single member of the council is a member of the JDO board. However, four members vote. You have the deputy mayor, the mayor, and two members of the council. The meetings are quarterly, and there's great discussion with regards to the future of economic development. So with that being said, two individuals can be nominated. Self-nominations are also accepted. Are there individuals interested in being nominated to the JDO board? Or would somebody like to nominate? Councilman Padilla?
I'd like to nominate Councilman Lesser.
We have a nomination for Councilman Lesser. Councilman Lesser, do you accept?
I accept, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have any other nominations for the JDO board? Councilwoman Ortiz?
I'd like to nominate Councilman Padilla.
Councilman Padilla, do you accept?
I do, thank you.
Councilman Jensen?
I would nominate Councilwoman Clear.
Councilwoman Clear, do you accept?
No, thank you.
Are there any other nominations on the floor? Are there any?
I'd like to make a nomination for Councilwoman Hiller.
Councilwoman Hiller, do you accept? We appreciate your attendance. Are there any other nominations? Councilwoman Ortiz?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Henderson.
Councilman Emerson, aka Henderson, would you accept?
Sure. Yes, I was on this year, and I would accept the nomination.
Okay. We have councilmembers Emerson, Padilla, and Lesser nominated. Are there any nominations once? Asking twice? Asking a third time? That being said, we have the ballots in front of us. Let's proceed with the first vote.
Okay, it looks like we have Emerson and Padilla. Padilla and Lesser. Emerson and Lesser. Padilla and Lesser. Padilla and Lesser. Emerson and Padilla. Padilla and Lesser. Emerson and Lesser. Padilla and Lesser. Padilla and Lesser. Okay, it looks like Lesser receives eight, Padilla receives eight, and Emerson receives one.
Seems that the council members that are appointed to the JDO board for this year are Councilman Lesser and Councilman Padilla. Congratulations and welcome to the team. Again, Councilwoman Ortiz, yes?
To Mr. Henderson, I don't think there was anything. I just don't think they knew who you were.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz.
Councilwoman Hiller?
If I could make a comment, I really appreciate this process each year. I just want to follow up on the mayor and encourage everyone to attend regularly. Our input, economic development is so important to us, and you can participate fully whether you're voting. I have great confidence in our members that are voting, but being there and being part of that's important, so, thank you.
Of course. I echo those sentiments and also appreciate the council members that were a part of JDO this past session. We now proceed with item C, election of the MTPO board. If the clerk would read.
C is election of city council representatives to the Metropolitan Topeka Planning Organization Policy.
At this point, I think that we understand what the process is, so I will just open it up for nominations. Councilman Cohen?
Can we get an explanation for what the MTPO board is for the newer folks that? I've been there, I know what it is. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller, yeah, exactly.
The MTPO in its most minimal function is, it stands for Metropolitan Topeka Planning Organization, but it's the transportation planning organization. And there are some federal requirements that require that a combination board of the entities that are involved in transportation in the community review and vote on various things, particularly that are going for federal funding. Often, that's through the state. So in our case in Topeka, there are representatives from the city, from the county, help me out if y'all, from the transportation, the bus service, and from, I believe, planning as well.
KDOT, yeah, KDOT's there.
And KDOT is on the board, and then KDOT and Federal Highway and other professionals, as needed, are generally present as well. Something that I'm really proud of that we have done here is we've said, you know what, we don't, we want to, we want to do master planning and look at how everything falls together, whether it's our own local funding or whether it has federal money involved. And so the MTPO in Topeka Shawnee County has taken a broader view, further with the advent of Complete Streets, which is cutting-edge view of planning your streets and transportation. It's cutting-edge nationwide, but I would say that here in Topeka Shawnee County, we're at the head of that. And so then the city of Topeka did the first resolution. So instead of just looking at cars and optimizing cars through intersections and speed and streets, you're looking at all the users of the streets. So you're looking at pedestrians, bicycles, cars, transit of all kinds, as well as trucks or commercial users. It looks at not only the streets, but also the sidewalks, the safety, you know, mid-block, crosswalks, and medians, and all those sorts of things. And our new transportation plan, the 2040 Transportation Plan, I believe if it was looked at nationally, would be award-winning. It has really incorporated all of those elements. So the MTPO is looking at the projects and how they hang together and making sure that all those elements have been included and has been active and affirmative in that work. So it's more than just a rubber stamp. That's the long version of it. It's more than a rubber stamp, and it's been fun to be on it. Thank you.
Thank you for the informational piece. Councilman Cohen, do you have other questions?
That's it, thank you.
Are there interest in nominations at this point? Councilman Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move to nominate Ms. Hiller and Mr. Henderson. He's a real popular guy. I'm not sure where he is, but.
A lot more popular than me.
So we have a nomination for Councilman Emerson and Councilwoman Hiller. Are there any other nominations? Councilwoman Ortiz?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Mays, Councilwoman Mays.
Any other nominations on the floor? Okay, this is a commitment for two years. Anybody else interested in this board? Other than, yes?
If I'm, this mayor, Mr. Mays, would you like to serve on this board?
Sure.
Okay, I would give Mr. Mays the opportunity.
So you rescind your nomination?
Yes.
Okay. So we have councilmembers Hiller and Councilman Mays for the MTPO board. Any other nominations? Going twice? Asking a third time? That being the case, we proceed to voting. That being the case, we proceed to voting.
Each one of them receives 10 bucks.
That being the case, congratulations, Councilmember Hiller and Councilmember Mays for joining the Metropolitan Transit Authority Board.
You'd be happy to know they just canceled the January meeting.
Okay, so, again, thank you for all the members as served before. Congratulations. It's exciting to see that all of our new council members are involved in one of the committees, so that's exciting. We proceed with item D, resolution of the City of Topeka Utilities Department, if the clerk would read.
C is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brenda Trout in accordance with Section 1860-10 of the Topeka Municipal Code, approving a conditional use permit to allow for a public utility facility type 2 sanitary sewer pump station on property zone PUD planned unit development and located south of Northwest Williams Street and approximately 185 feet east of Northwest Tyler Street in the city of Topeka Shawnee County, Kansas.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Planning Director Bill Feiner is here to review the conditional use permit in the PUD, excuse me.
Thank you, Manager Trout. Good evening, Governing Body. This is a conditional use permit for a pump station, a replacement of a current pump station. It is just north of the Y, MCA, in North Topeka, fronting Williams Street, which is just intersecting with Tyler there. Try to get oriented. It's on actually a parcel that's a fairly large parcel owned by Topeka Housing Authority. We have an easement over it, the city does, to have the existing pump station. I have a picture that... As you can see, that's the existing structures. It's not much of a station right now, but what will be... And you can also see it's set back quite far from the street, probably more than 100 feet, so it really doesn't have any visual impacts right now. What is replacing it will have a little more substance to it. It's a 12-foot-high, 240-square-foot pump house, so this will be a... It will house the pump and all the machinery inside of it. It'll be a prefabricated fiberglass building surrounded by a security fence, 7-foot security fence. Now, that will be mitigated visually by not only its placement in the rear, but will also have eight evergreen trees that are surrounded, screening the fence area as well. In addition, a 75-foot antenna will be placed in the back. It is an antenna necessary for the pump station, so we can remote in to gather data and operate it. Sound and odor, these issues have never been... There's never been issues in the area with that. No complaints have been received, but we do have conditions as part of the CUP to protect against anything. Utilities certainly is ready to put in place any odor mitigation measures that if something should happen. That being said, there were no issues or complaints, concerns that have not been addressed by the CUP, that have been voiced in the neighborhood. The Planning Commission had recommended approval unanimously, so did staff, so we ask for a motion to approve the resolution. I do have Braxton Copley, Deputy Director of Utilities, here to answer any technical questions if you need.
Thank you, Mr. Feiner. Does the body have any questions?
Okay, being that there's no questions, this is one of those items in which we are in a quasi-juridical fashion, therefore, we need to disclose if we have had any ex parte communication. Part of that includes, for the record, minutes of the Planning Commission, any communications that you have received in favor or against this project, and it is important that we do so with the statement that, understanding that we received that information does not alter our ability to make a decision that is impartial. Now, that being said, if we would like to proceed with Councilwoman Hiller?
None.
None.
None. None.
Mr. Lesser, your previous occupant there used to say something incredibly graceful that the rest of us just sort of dittoed. So, if you could do that, that would be fabulous. In the meantime, though, I haven't received any communications. Nor have I.
No communication, Mayor.
No.
Thank you for the profound words, Councilwoman Lesser. I have received the minutes of the Planning Commission that were attached in the packet, and I have reviewed those, but that still does not impede my ability to make a decision. At this point in time, is there a motion for approval?
Madam Mayor, I would move approval.
Thank you, Councilman Emerson. Councilman Jensen?
Second.
He seconds, and we proceed with the voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the item passes. We now proceed with the non-action item portion of the agenda, discussion with regards to the governing body rules, procedures, and the annual review. City Manager, if the clerk would read?
A is discussion on the governing body rules and procedures annual review.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Governing Body. For this particular item, I'll let the city attorney cover the changes that are outlined in the governing body rules. She pulled that together and I'll let her cover it.
Hopefully, each of you have a little packet that the city clerk provided that says item 6A, governing body rules and procedures. I'm going to use that to kind of go through the changes that we were proposing. Brenda and I took a pretty good look at it, but of course, we're here to get your input as well, obviously. The first change would be on page 6. You look to lines 179 through 181. The language that we added here was just to make it clear some of the tasks and duties that Brenda performs here during the council meetings. We thought it was fairly important to kind of make that clear, and so that's the only change there. The next is page 6, same page, lines 210 to 214. Down here, we provided some additional reference to the charter as well as to Chapter 215, because the TMC provision only addressed the location of the council meetings, and the charter addresses some other things that need to be referred back to as well, so it's just a cross-reference. In the charter, it talks more about how meetings are called, and we thought that was fairly important that if there's anything that differs in the charter, folks know to refer back to that, but it's pretty straightforward as well. Page 7, lines 229 to 234. This provides additional specification related to the information that needs to be included in special meeting notices. This is kind of the impetus behind us looking into this, because when we call special governing body meetings, sometimes we get confused about what the agenda and what the call has to say, because there isn't a clear distinction between what's a regular governing body meeting and what's special. So, some of the next revisions you'll see kind of clarify if it's special, this is what you need to do, and if it's regular, we insert the words "regular" so you can kind of tell a little bit better. So, this just talks about the notice and that the agenda has to list the items of subjects that are going to be discussed, and you need to keep your discussion towards those subjects. The next is in lines 241 through 244. It's a new section E that talks about the governing body. It's permissive, so you don't have to, but if the governing body would like to work towards developing some type of procedures to address any particular items that come up during the budget process, they're more administrative in nature, probably shouldn't be spelled out in the governing body rules, but this just kind of references that and provides an opportunity for the body to do that if they wish to work with budget staff to do that. Next page, 8, in lines 292 and line 305. This is kind of what I talked about a little bit before, just previously, inserting the reference to regular governing body meetings when we talk about preparation and circulation and agenda contents. This is one of the things that kind of tripped us up with the special meetings. We kept talking about, do we need to do this whole agenda list for special meetings? And we really don't. This pertains to regular meetings. The next item is page 10. And it is at lines 393 to 396. This is under the rules of... The motions, actually. And we look back at Robert's Rules, and there isn't a motion to strike in Robert's Rules. And when you read the substance of this particular motion, it actually would be covered by a motion to amend or a motion to defer. So, we thought that, you know, to eliminate confusion, I don't think we've used it since I've been here, but we just thought it would be cleaner just to delete that particular motion. The next page would be page 11, lines 439 to 441. This is on a motion to reconsider. In our particular rules, we didn't have language in the item that states that any motion to reconsider has to be made by a person who voted on the prevailing side. That's in Robert's Rules, but in some of the other rules within our procedures, it talks about how our rules would supersede Robert's Rules to the extent they're different. And if there's no specific reference in here to the fact that a member of the prevailing side has to make the motion, there could be questions about it, and there have been. So, I thought adding that language in there would just clean that up and make at least me feel a little bit better. Nobody else? And then pages 14 and 15, lines 589 to 597, and then line 615 and 620. This language was tightened up a little bit. The Policy and Finance Committee did some really good work on this, oh gosh, a couple years ago, I guess, and wanted to ensure that matters that were referred to a committee didn't just, you know, languish in committee, that they got brought back and they didn't get lost in the process, and it wasn't a way to maybe delay action. So, we kind of put some language in there to try to accomplish it. What this does is just tighten it up a little bit better. I thought it was a little bit loose, so I tightened it up, and you know, that's my fault two years ago, I think. So, hopefully, that tightens it up a little bit. And then, back in line 615 and 620 on page 15, it just states clearly that it's brought back as an action item, either to be acted upon or reported upon. And so, that's all that staff has, actually, as far as suggestions go.
Thank you very much, City Attorney. Again, this is an item for discussion. This is our time to evaluate these documents before we do a final vote on them. I appreciate the work of the committee in supporting this work. Is there any... Are there any comments or any questions? Councilwoman clear?
I know I mentioned this last year, but I mention it again. On 8.5, procedure for committee items, since the duties... It's the duty of the committee to act promptly and faithfully. I do not think 90 days is promptly. I think it should be 60 days. Gosh, 90 days would be what, a quarter of a year? I just think it should be 60 days.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Hiller?
Well, I'll respond to that one, because I... We had that conversation before in... If I recall our discussion, certainly in my experience, when we send something to committee, it often is something that needs multiple meetings and work. Often, there's at least one public hearing where the public is invited or experts in the field and stakeholders, and realistically, if you're appointed, it takes you 30 days just to get that meeting together, particularly if it's the first meeting of the committee of the year, and to get organized and get that going. And 90 days can pass pretty quickly, and we've known, well, animal control took most of the year, and they worked steadily on that last year, just as a for instance, and so... That's how we use our committees, is to actually do some work and some engagement, so I think it's reasonable. I do have a couple of comments, but maybe other people would have some reactions to that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hiller. Are there any other comments from the body? This is an important item.
I do have a couple others.
It's the way that we handle our meetings, so this is great. Councilwoman Hiller?
Okay. Overall, I think this idea of the annual review is great, because it's fresh in the experience that we've had, so I want to compliment the staff for bringing that up. I really just have to... On page 7, where it says the governing body may work in conjunction with staff to develop procedures to address particular issues during special meetings, my thought would be to stop right there and put the parentheses up front, because certainly, when we're doing budget, we're having a special meeting about budget, we might want special procedures to deal with budget, but there might be other subjects where we would want to be structuring it, and sometimes we do public hearings. We've had some of those really successfully in the past. Maybe we did them as work sessions, but where we decide how we're going to sit and how we're going to engage the public for that particular hearing. I just thought we could make it more general than just the budget. Others might have some other thoughts on that. And the only... The other one that I had... In terms of the preparation and circulation of the agendas, which is 5.1 on page... Let's see.
Page 8.
Page 8. I talked about it with the city manager a little bit, and I just want to raise this issue. I don't know if it needs to be in this policy, but I do think it's important, and that is when we... For those who weren't here, we did a major revision of these really a few years ago and then did an update last year, or in 2016. But the idea of having the agendas posted two weeks out was so that the agenda two weeks out, you know, things can happen, but was firm, and when an item was on that agenda, all the attachments were on it when it was first posted. And we have slipped on that a little bit recently. It's coming back, but I do think it's important for the council to have full knowledge of what an agenda item is, and for the public to be able to look on it in advance, which was our intent, so that they could comment, get with their councilperson, get it out to other people, that the attachments also be out with that agenda. I didn't frame any language, but I could. Also, when committees have reported, sometimes we haven't had the attachments two weeks out, and just because it's a committee report, or as importantly, I think we need to have the two weeks' advance notice that it's going to be on the agenda and have all the attachments as well. Just a little tightening up and just some conversation.
Councilman Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. Lisa, we... The community requested that we, as the governing body, attend that meeting several weeks ago, and there was concern that the way the meeting was scheduled, it might violate some of our rules if too many of us showed up. Do we... You know, since we're cracking these open to look at them, do we need to change that at all in such a way that it would... We would be allowed to show up like that without violating coma?
I think that's a state law, Councilmember Jensen, and I don't know that we'd probably want to go into council rules and...
And that's an acceptable answer. I'm not sure what level our ability to meet is governed, and even though we weren't there meeting to discuss it with each other, there was still concern that we all shouldn't be in the same room together.
Right. I think part of that, I believe, just based on the subject matter, it's just you have to, you know, exercise good judgment, knowing what the circumstances are, and I think you all did, and...
Okay. Well, if there's nothing in our rules that needs to be changed, then I'm good with that. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the body? Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just, I guess, a procedural question. If we're going to entertain... And I do agree with Councilmember Hiller on that. I think that's a great suggestion, because, as you say, there have been many times recently when we don't get things till the week finally before the meeting. But if we want to change, that would just be an amendment next week. Is that correct?
Actually, it would be possible for staff to work...
I'm sorry.
Prior to the meeting, and then those amendments, now that the staff has the understanding of what the spirit of those amendments are, I think staff can work with the body and ensure that those changes are done, delivered to us prior to the meeting, and then we would vote on the full document.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Councilwoman clear?
Then I'm going to ask that the 60 days be put in there. I mean, I know, yep, 90 days goes quick, so does 60, but our responsibility is to get it done quick. I think when you say 90 days, people go, yeah, I got 90 days. Say you got 60 days, people go, oh my gosh, I got 60 days, and they work a little quicker, so. And they work a little quicker, so.
Any other, Councilwoman Jensen.
Just a quick question. So on that, are you interested in just a report back within 60s or return for action?
Just continue to, it just changed 90 to 60, and it's either you resolve it or you come back and report. The rest would be the same.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Comments or questions from the body? Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. I will support the 90 days because sometimes, especially during budget time, it just doesn't happen with all our extra meetings. But I, I, I agree, we need to get it done as soon as possible, but we also want to do it right because we can't bring it back for another six months. So I would like that extra 30 days, so I will support to keep the 90 days in there.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ortiz. Any other comments from the body? Okay, seeing none. We will look forward to seeing this item with the amendments suggested for discussion and for approval.
Thank you.
At this moment, we proceed with announcements. If the clerk would read. There's no preliminary. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Governing body. The only announcement that I have is that I'll be meeting with staff on Thursday to start the process of reviewing the International Building Code, International Fire Code, and Life Safety Code reviews that, to bring that item back to you eventually. We'll work through the situations and issues, talk to some other folks that are affected by it, and we'll be bringing it back when we feel we're comfortable with it.
Thank you, City Manager. I have a few announcements. I would invite everybody to take a look at the report that the city manager sent for the week. It included a graphic showing how much has the C Click Fix application has been used. It's exciting to see that the community is engaging in this. I would urge everybody in our community to download C Click Fix. It's a great application. You can pay your bills there. You can communicate with your city staff and get things done. You get a queue with regards to the things that you report. It was, we had 3,429 completed requests out of 3,727 generated. So that, I think, it's very encouraging. In addition to that, I just wanted to express my appreciation to all the Living the Dream group. They coordinated some amazing events this weekend. I was privileged to participate in most of them, and it was, it was wonderful to see that the dream for Dr. Martin Luther King is still very well alive. And, and it was unanimous that there's still work to do because, I mean, we all have room to, to learn and to grow. But it was great to see that there was a spirit of collaboration and willingness to work together in our community. The speaker that was present at the, at the, at the banquet on, on Saturday night said, some words that I think that this community should take to heart. He was one of the Freedom Riders. And he said, "It was really great to see from where he was standing and from the individuals that he met, the amount of diversity." It wasn't just the Hispanic community and the African-American community. There were leaders from different communities, like the, the Indian community and the Bangladeshi groups. It was great to see everybody there, standing together and talking and learning. It was a powerful night. In addition to that, I want to congratulate our Chief of Police, Chief Cochran, that was selected and it was announced on Friday. I think that for us in the city, this ends the era of the interim. It's been something that we have been, we've been working with the community on various different issues, and we have had the challenge of saying, we're in an interim period right now, we're in an interim period right now, and this is the time where it starts. I think that all of us are hungry to see certain things worked on. It's exciting that already Chief Cochran has started sending communications with regards to certain plans that he has. We're going to have a meeting with the city manager soon to start working on strategy for community policing. So we're excited that we have our full staff, we have a full team, and, and I appreciate all the work that Deputy City Manager Gerber did while he was here as on our interim, and how promptly City Manager Trout addressed the issue of the Chief of Police that our city was looking forward to. I will not be here this weekend. I want to express my appreciation to the National Puerto Rican Leadership Council. I am going to be this weekend in Florida, addressing a group of displaced Puerto Ricans. There's 400,000 Puerto Ricans in Orlando, and with, with being elected, they wanted to have somebody that had experience rising up from adversity to speak to them. And it is going to be my privilege to be with them this weekend and hopefully provide them some words of inspiration as they're trying to, you know, deal with the loss of the Hurricane Maria. Finally, and certainly not least, I want to encourage and yet again invite every single person that's in this body to participate in the JATO Board. Commissioner Cook and I have been talking about how can we have an open discussion with the whole body of the council and the commission at the same time, not just the JATO Board, but having a working session inside of that. And we're interested in hearing what the whole body's concept is with regards to the issue of quality of place. So keep that in, in your, in your mind when we send out the reminder for JATO. We would love to have all of you here so that we could have an open conversation with the county as well. We proceed with Mr. Councilman Padilla for your announcements.
I'd just like to follow up a little bit, Madam Mayor, on what you talked about with the Living the Dream. One of the comments that the speaker also said, and made it quite clear, that looking upon the crowd that attended, he said that, "You have really got something going on here in Topeka." He said he's been around the country and has not seen that number gathered together for that cause like we have here in Topeka. And again, I think oftentimes we forget that we have a lot of good things going on in Topeka, and we don't talk about them enough to enough people. So if you didn't get a chance to attend this year, and believe me, it was hard to get a seat, plan on it next year because it really was a wonderful presentation. The play that they put on, that multimedia play, I wish everybody could see that in Topeka, if there was some way to get it out there or have the kids see it. I mean, the youth could really get a lot from seeing something like that. But I applaud the effort that the Living the Dream Committee made. It was an excellent evening. And I also would like to congratulate my friend, Bill Cochran, on being named our permanent Chief of Police. Thank you.
Councilman Jensen, Deputy Mayor Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank you all again for the opportunity to serve as your deputy mayor. I just cannot tell you how excited I am for 2018. I mean, just look at how we took a list of things that needed to be done and divided it fairly easily and equitably amongst the council with all of the different roles and things that needed to be fulfilled. I think that's just an incredible way to start off 2018, working together, to divide all of these incredibly important tasks that need to be accomplished. I'm also incredibly excited that we, we are at, at a full staff now at the city, at least in our, at our executive level. I think that our whole team is ready to go, and this is going to be an incredible year. And I invite the public to come and share that success. If you have something you'd like to see the city do or need help with something, please reach out to us. I mean, this is our opportunity to really help make Topeka the best place we possibly can. We're starting off with an excellent process here, and I'd love to get the entire community behind making 2018 an incredible year in Topeka. Thank you.
Councilman Mays.
You guys have all said some pretty wonderful things. I would also like to congratulate Chief Cochran. I think that's a fantastic choice. And thank you guys for electing me to the MTPO.
Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to tell the council and the public about this event that I attended this last week. It was, the St. Jude Hospital is giving away a home here in Topeka, and it's a home that is being built completely at the expense of the construction company and their subcontractors. The city, to help keep this to be a, a zero-based home, we waived the building permits also. So this, this is a zero-cost home, and they're going to raffle off tickets. So I'm going to challenge all of you, this is $100, and you could buy a home in my district. Well, it's, it's five feet outside of my district. But for $100 per raffle ticket, I think they'll start going on sale in March. So be looking for that. I'll be buying a ticket.
Councilman Lesser.
Thank you. I also want to congratulate the chief on his selection. I'm excited, very excited to, to work with you. Other than that, I want to thank the, the workers out there in the cold getting our streets taken care of. It's cold out there, so thanks for everything you guys do. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, what they said, I was at the Martin Luther King Living the Dream events too, and it was, it was stunning. And, and when you read the news, if you weren't there, there have been huge turnouts at each event, no matter the temperature and no matter if there was another event at the same time. It's meaning a lot to a lot of people, and, and I personally think that that story of freedom and opportunity and how we've addressed it in the past, in Civil War times, in Civil Rights times, and how we're addressing it today in various ways, is in fact who we are in our heart. The, the desire to treat people fairly, to learn about them, to have a disagreement right out there and just chew through it and figure out how to overcome it. And as Mayor says, we have work to do, but I think 2018 is our year to really tackle some of those things in the most affirmative of ways. Congratulations, new colleagues. And maybe it was accidental, but I love seeing the new people each on a big committee, and we will have work to do, but welcome, welcome. Congrats to Chief Cochran. That was really fun. And last but not least, we are not announcing the two-week-out agenda, but many people were very interested last summer in discussing the issue of fireworks, and it is on the February 6th agenda for discussion. And so I would encourage the public and in ways that we can get it out through staff so that people who had some thoughts about that have plenty of notice, not just the agenda posting, to let us on the council know by email or phone calls or whatever they want and, and/or to come and speak. We need to turn it around fast enough. There's not time to send it to a committee, I think, before the times that we do the licenses. So we are probably going to need to deal with whatever we want to this year as a committee of the whole, just move it. Thank you.
Councilwoman clear.
This isn't in my district, but it's an event that I support, and it's the 2018 Designer Showcase Bare Bones Preview. And this supports children by supporting high-quality childcare options. And this is a flip house, so they're going to design it and then flip it, and it's on the 19th through the 21st, 10 to 5. It's the only day that you can look at the bare bones, and it's $5 at the door.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Ortiz. Councilman Emerson.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I also wanted to congratulate Chief Cochran. I think you're going to do a fantastic job for us, and I commend the city manager and his colleagues in making that decision. On Monday, I attended one of the events, Martin Luther King. It was called, Whose Dream Is It? And it was, it was a great event, but I wanted to mention that John May, my predecessor in this chair, and a great guy in my district, was there. And one thing he mentioned was the, the kids, there was an art and poetry contest, and all those are on display right now at the Board versus, Brown versus Board Education Building. So he said, "It's just fantastic, the talent we have here." So I just, that's another reason to go out and, and look at a local Topeka attraction. So everyone, go out and do that.
We proceed with the public comment. If Ms. Rose Welch would join us at the podium. Welcome.
Hey. So I'm sure everybody knows, I'm Rose Welch. So the first thing I want to do today is welcome our new council members, Councilman Lesser, Councilman Mays, and Councilman Padilla. We're really glad that you're here. And Mayor De La Isla, it's really great to see a woman of color sitting in that particular spot here. And I know that you're not new to this space, but I did want to welcome you as our new mayor. I am really hopeful that your leadership can take us in a positive direction this year, and I'm really excited for a fresh start with our new council. So today, I'm going to tell you a story. Phew, sorry, I was running up them stairs. So we've got quite a lot going on at these council meetings of late, and people have really been taking notice, which is great. So last month, one person in particular pulled me aside and asked like how to get on, to talk at these meetings. And I explained the process to him, and we spoke for a few moments about the importance of community engagement. And as we finished our interaction, this person jokingly said to me, like, "Boy, your last city council must have been glad to see the back of you." And it was funny, but it was also really shocking to me to like hear that perception, not because someone might get tired of me, that one, I understand. But the fact is that there's probably not a single city council member in the city that I lived in before that could tell you my name from council business. They've probably seen my name in the paper or in the news regarding community events that I ran, or maybe they attended one of their events or took their kids to one of those events. But the only city leadership that I ever dealt with in that city were the mayor and the city manager. And that was really just as like a formality to get permission to use city-owned spaces for community events. See, the city that I came from, that I lived in before here, is the most corrupt and graph-filled place I've ever been in my entire life, and I've done a decent amount of traveling. So going to a city council meeting there would have been a waste of my time, and talking to the city council members would have been a waste of my breath. So I know sometimes it might seem like we're really down on you guys, especially in contrast to a period of time where like people weren't really engaging at these meetings, but that just isn't the case. We're here because we do still believe in you as a council body and because we still believe in Topeka. Every role, we're here because community involvement is a vital role in our system of checks and balances, and every role in our system has to be utilized in order for it to work. We believe that our city can be better, that our community can do better, and that the people we've elected are more than equal to the task before us. And we do have a number of tasks in front of us. As a council, you guys are here doing your work, and as a community, we need to step up to do our work. We started last month when we came together to share our concerns and determine which problems are most immediately concerning to us. This month, we'll begin forming community initiatives to address those issues and plan those campaigns. And by this time next month, we'll have begun work on those initiatives and campaigns. So it's a really exciting time for positive change in Topeka, and we really hope that you guys can join us at our meeting next week on January 22nd at 6:00 PM at the Topeka Library. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person to speak is Mr. Marty Hillard.
Unfortunately, councilwoman declined to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, good evening. I'm Reverend Sarah Oglesby Donegan. And welcome again to those of you who recently joined the council and those of you who are returning. I'm a minister here in Topeka, and in December, I brought some books to this body and promised to bring more copies of one book in particular, a book that was researched by University of Kansas professors, Dr. Charles Epp, you see my middle age setting in here, and from the School of Public Affairs and Administration, Dr. Stephen Maynard Moody, also from the School of Public Affairs and Administration. He's also the director of the Institute for Policy and Social Research, and Dr. Donald Heidel Markel from the Department of Political Science at KU. This book is titled Pulled Over: How Police Stops to Find Race and Citizenship. And I have personally heard Dr. Epp speak about the research in this book a couple of years ago. I know that many of you came to this job with specific skills and areas of interest and expertise that do not necessarily include the ins and outs of policing. Of course, Councilman Padilla, we know this is different for you. You have a strong background in policing, and you served here in Topeka for 34 years and retired at the rank of major. So I offer these books because the research in them is sound and the issues are relevant and of deep importance. They are offered to you via my middle adjudicatory, the Mid-America Unitarian Universalist Association, whose interest in these issues extends nationwide. One staff member there worked as a minister in Cincinnati, Ohio, for a number of years during which time the police and community issues were at an all-time low. I sent some of these, some articles to some of you earlier about the work done there, and I hope that we can learn from it. I want to just read a little excerpt from the introduction so that you have an understanding of why I think this book is so important. The authors say, "We hope that this book will show what is wrong with this and similar, what is wrong with the idea of just thinking about racial profiling around investigatory stops." It is not, they say it is if, sorry. The source is the police practice of investigatory stops and how this officially-guided practice "The source is the police practice of investigatory stops and how this officially-guided practice prompts officers to act on implicit stereotypes of who looks suspicious. Investigatory stops are aimed not at enforcing law but checking whether a person is up to no good. When police departments encourage their officers to make investigatory stops, this necessarily translates into an expectation to make stops on the basis of incoherent suspicions. What happens then, as every law enforcement specialist knows, is precisely what the New York statistics reveal. The vast majority of those stopped are innocent, and racial minorities are disproportionately represented among those innocent victims of intrusive stops. As an officer long ago observed to journalist Gary Webb, you've got to kiss a lot of frogs before you find that one prince." And so this book has some incredible research that I hope that you will take a look at and use this as an opportunity to learn and discuss policing in Topeka and to develop some plans for how we can negotiate changes that are meaningful for police and citizens that look to research to understand what is problematic and how we approach some common practices like the investigatory stop. And I look forward to hearing how each of you will respond to these ideas and issues and how the community will be engaged in your strategic management of this division of the city. So I thank you for your time, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, Reverend Oglesby, and thank you very much for the books for the rest of the team. The next speaker is Hannah Hansen. Hannah Hansen?
I think she's still on her way.
We will move forward to the next speaker, then, Neil Kennedy.
Hello, and thank you for having me today. My name is Neil Kennedy. I'm a native Tucumnamen. I was raised in Oakland, where my family has lived for over 100 years, and I'm currently a PhD student at the University of Kansas. As women of color, I have had my own experiences in the city, and those experiences took me to last month's community meeting, where we came together to discuss our community experiences and concerns. It was a relief to finally be in a space where we could safely express ourselves with people who have had the same experiences with people who aren't in denial of our problems in our community. And it was a relief to feel heard by the members of our elected leadership who came. Mayor De La Isla, city manager Brent Trout, and all the other council members who were attendees, thank you for coming and listening to our concerns. I look forward to seeing you all, and hopefully those who weren't able to attend our meeting last month will come on Monday, January 22nd at the Topeka Library at 6:00 PM. Since that meeting, I have done a lot of research on the topic of police enforcing, and I was really encouraged to see that over the last decade, communities like ours have done a considerable amount of experimenting to discover the best methods of recovering, healing, and improvement. I'll be at the next week's meeting to share that information with our community and to work to promote, work with other citizens to promote the adoption of these methods within our community. Together, I know that we can make Topeka a safe place for everyone. With that being said, I know there is a really important component to our healing as a community, and that begins with our police chief. Like many community members, I favored an outside candidate because I wanted a police force which eschews cronyism and nepotism, which operates for the community and not for a system of good old boys, and which does not have an investment in defending the past decisions that have led us to this broken piece. I have never met Chief Cochran, so I can't say for myself if he's the kind of leader. But I trust that you also value these things, and I accept your judgment in choosing Chief Cochran to lead our police forces going forward. However, we do not need to take, we do need to take a moment to acknowledge what we have learned from past chiefs and past councils. Past chiefs have been in serious denial and have chosen to hide their heads in this collective sand on these issues. Past chiefs have had reactionary attitudes and refuse to address foreseeable issues until the worst has happened. Going forward, I expect our new police chief to recognize and address these issues which haunt our community and to proactively work to improve our police forces. Past chiefs have stonewalled and purposely withheld information from our community. Past chiefs have worked to sabotage community initiatives. Going forward, I expect our new police chief to cooperate with community-led initiatives and to make immediate changes to become more transparent and accountable to the community that he serves. Past councils have turned a blind eye to some of these same issues, and that has cost our city considerable amounts of money and damage to the police, to the public trust, and more importantly, has affected the lives of real people. Going forward, I expect our council members to take these to heart and take these hard-earned lessons to heart and to hold yourselves more accountable to these lessons and to hold our police chief to these fair standards. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. The next speaker is Ms. Oshara Hayes.
I like to say hello, and I want to congratulate our new mayor, and I want to also congratulate the new members of the city council, and also want to congratulate the members who were re-elected. My name is Oshara Hayes. I hope you hear our voices, the voices of the people who stood in line to elect you to the position you hold at this very moment. I hope that you can feel what your constituents are feeling, and I hope that you will do something about it. I hope that you remember you would not be sitting in those seats if it had not been for the people who are sitting here before you at this very moment. I hope that when you make decisions about policies, rules, guidelines, et cetera, you will keep people, the people, in mind. I hope that you will think about your own families and their welfare when you make decisions concerning the people in this room and in the city. I hope that you will consider how it felt for you before you became a councilperson. Were you thinking, "Wow, I cannot believe that the city council voted on this measure. That really makes no sense." Well, now it is your turn. What are you going to do? It is your turn to address issues that come to your attention as a council. I hope that you can look deep within your heart and soul and make decisions. I hope that you will be thinking, "If my child, mother, father, sister, brother, aunt, uncle, et cetera, had to go through this, how would I feel?" I hope that when you see issues come to your attention, that you will think, "How would I feel if I were in their shoes?" I hope you will make decisions that will be beneficial to your constituents. How do you think it feels to give more attention to beautification than to housing for people who don't have a place to live? How do you think it feels to give more attention to buying and selling land on the outskirts of the city than to making sure those that need immediate help can be helped? I hope you consider the people. I hope you can reach deep down inside and consider how the people feel. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, we are done with the public comment. We have an executive session. If the city attorney would read the parameters.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of 15 minutes for consultation with the city's legal counsel to discuss attorney-client privilege matters related to workers' compensation as justified by KSA 75-4319B2. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: Members of the governing body, City Manager Brent Trout, Deputy City Manager Doug Gerber, Financial Administrative Services Director Nikki Lee, Human Resources Director Jackie Russell, Risk Manager Shannon Langston, and myself.
Do we have a motion?
Mayor, before we go into executive session, did the other person arrive that was scheduled to speak?
I didn't see anybody walk to the door. That's why I proceeded.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you. Councilwoman Heller.
Maybe somebody said something at the beginning of the meeting, but just for the public, we have two executive sessions tonight.
Correct, two executive sessions tonight.
So this one will be followed by another. Just, okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion? Councilman Cohen?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Do I have a second? Thank you very much, Councilman Lesser. At this point, we would all vote to go into executive sessions. After the vote, we will have a five-minute recess and then just reengage into the meeting.
We have 10 yes?
10 having voted yes, we will recess into executive session. We do have a five-minute recess before then.
Okay.